All right, so the time is 6:01 and we're going to call this meeting to order. We're starting, we're going to adjourn, adjourn to budget and finance work groups until 6:45 and then we'll be back on.
After the consent agenda.
So we have to start with the consent agenda? Okay, just kidding. Retake. Sorry, I'm frozen. Look at you still coming in. All right, so now we're really calling it. We're at 6:02, so we're going to start the consent agenda. The first item is to vote on the minutes from September 20th, 2022. Did everyone have a time to read over those minutes? Were there any comments? Do you have any?
Motion to approve the minutes for September 20th, 2022. I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to, we're going to vote the warrants number 20 and 21, which are already passed around. Did you guys have a minute? All those are in our folder. Are you comfortable doing that now? Okay, so we would have a motion for warrants 20 and 21.
I'll make the motion to approve warrants 20 and 21. I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right, now we're going to adjourn to the budget and finance work group until 6:45. All right, welcome back. First up is visitor comment. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrator or assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone who is unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record for the meeting. Do we have any visitors? You must be on the agenda today? All right, seeing none, move on. First up, new business, cross-country donation. Come on up.
So here we get approval for a donation check made by Gretchen, Dr. Gretchen Lobel. She's a parent of one of our cross-country runners. My understanding is their family each year makes a donation in honor of her son and this year she thought that cross-country team was a worthy cause.
Any questions?
Big thank you.
I'll take absolutely thank you. And that's done.
What's the amount?
Seventeen hundred. Can I have a motion to accept the $1,700 donation?
I was just curious for like reasons of what you guys were thinking you might use it towards or what.
Yeah, so that's the kind of thing in the air, but her request was that it was used within the cross-country program. So maybe some things that were on the coaches' wish list that we weren't be able to get. Now they're running a concession stand at the middle school state meeting coming up, so stocking up on some things.
It's great. Thank you. I'll make the motion to accept the $1,700 cross-country donation, $1,700.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you so much to your Dr. Lobel.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a vote on facility needs.
So I don't know that this really needed a vote, but considering one of our objectives is to share it with this committee so that they have an opportunity to take a look at it and then we can share it with the finance committee and select board prior to our meeting on October 7th, I'm sorry, October 17th. We just put it in as a vote just for that. So there's been a few minor updates to it from the spring version that you saw. Couple of projects have been completed, couple areas that we included in the facility needs assessment. Again, it was done internally by our own facilities folks, John Sullivan and his team. A lot of the information was used previously for our MSBA statement of interest and things like that, but as we had discussed last year, having one document that identified some of the biggest facility and maintenance needs for, right now, this is specifically the junior senior high school. We felt like having that document when we're having these conversations with other people in town and other committees would be helpful. So this is what Adam and John and the team put together.
So none of these are things that have already been part of capital requests that we have previously made, right?
I think the HVAC, the kitchen, that stuff is still in there because there's more that's complete, but there's nothing that we're saying is a need where work has been completed of.
Okay, yeah.
So some of it may be pending, yes.
Okay, that's all I just wanted to make sure. Okay, any questions on this? I'm going to take that one. Do you want us to vote on it? Did we vote on it last year?
I just want to, I guess.
So I guess my only comment that I'm starting to think of is whether or not like are we sharing any of this now? Like, you know, we have people that are viewing, should we be doing like a little bit of a share on what's on here or are we going to be addressing this with the finance committee on the 17th?
So that was my question of all of you. If you're okay with it, I'm happy to share this document out with finance committee, the administrator, select board prior to that meeting so they have some information. But we can certainly talk through, talk through it here. Do you think we talked through it a little bit in the spring, but I'm happy to.
And I just have one other question. You said that this was compiled by, who made the list?
So it was really me, John, and his maintenance.
Have we, I'm just curious, like some of these big ticket things like the HVAC and the electrical, have we brought anyone in to give us quotes and see if there's anything else?
Yeah, so back to the, back to the capital improvement. So we put HVAC and boilers or HVAC work on capital requests last year, two years ago? Yeah, the past two years. We, back then, we had three different prices from the same vendor depending on how large of a scale we wanted to go and we went with the smallest one and I believe was about two or three million dollars. That could be, that could be off, but it could have been as much as 10 or 12, 15 million dollars. So yeah, we've had, we have had people in to give us some quotes, cost estimates on what it would be.
I was thinking especially just like even within the last year, like costs, everything has gone significantly.
We haven't had it in the last year.
I was just curious, the figures.
Yeah, and our goal with this wasn't about identifying the costs as much as just identifying the needs.
Right, right. Would it be beneficial for us to have it listed on here? But it wasn't on our most recent, recent capital improvements request, the HVAC, right?
It was not. The most recent was the kitchen and partial renovation of the, or first phase renovation of the gym, locker room area.
Only because for me.
Ventilation was included in both of those, which is part of HVAC.
Okay, for me, I like having that history on here, like was a capital improvement plan request in this year and in this year and only wasn't in this year because kitchen ended up being precedent, you know what I mean? Or just because I want them to know like this is not the first time that it's being out there heard.
Yeah, so I totally agree with that. Again, this is why I think this document was really just to capture the.
The state of where we're at.
Eventually, we'd like it to be for the district. Right now, East Meadow's really too new to capture a lot of these things, but it's really to focus on the junior senior high school and what are the ongoing problems that haven't been addressed or we've addressed some quick fixes to get us to another year, but we can certainly.
I just think the narrative is good to have it in there as that like, hey, by the way, like this isn't new, you know, we brought it up this year, this year, and only didn't this particular year because. Especially I feel like there's sometimes questions, I'm not sure how long, I know John's been on it a long time and, but like others have been on, there might be some new members, you know, just so it's like out in the clear of this isn't new if they haven't been following.
So adding the year that, like a capital improvement request.
Yeah, just like a parenth- not like giant, but like parentheses, was requested this year, this year, and then didn't this particular year. I don't know, maybe you guys know.
It almost like logs a history of what was there, but maybe was moved somewhere else or.
Which to me would almost be like a different document or maybe like at the end not.
There you go, that's fine. I just feel like it should be somewhere on there.
It's like tracking.
Yeah.
Even for our records, I guess like that would.
So I guess we could certainly do it, but we're going to probably be limited if, right, if there was a request for the boilers made eight or nine years ago, we might, so we would only be probably going back in the last five.
Right. I feel like there's no time like the present to start tracking any of it.
I mean, some of the, since we're here for five years, you know, then you have a good idea of what's been asked. And for as long as I've been on school committee, boilers have been something that's been at the forefront, the gym has been at the forefront, you know, the roof, we made great progress, you know, like all of these things like Audrey and Stephanie are saying and Jill too, there's a history there. So if we can just, almost like, I'm sort of picturing like we have that Excel document that you had where you were kind of walking around, like it could almost just be sort of Excel at the end where, you know, it's.
And I'm fine if it's a separate document, but I feel like that also should go with like some sort of tracking of a, you know what I mean? If it's not on this exact one, but somewhere that also goes with them that they.
I think if we're going to use this document, it would make sense to just, even if we're just referencing those years.
Right.
I don't think it makes sense to have a separate document.
Okay, what should I just do?
Sort of be like an appendix that, you know?
Yeah, I can just insert someone that like what our capital requests have been the last five years related to this information. Because I think.
You don't go back any further than that.
No, yeah.
Yeah, I don't even know if we would have that data.
I just also don't think it'd really be relevant.
Yeah, I think the boilers were only, we only did one, one capital request, that was two years ago, but I'll go back and I'll put something on here.
But just like an appendix sort of thing, I think everyone sort of thinks, I think we're all on the same page with that, just to have some of that history there will make, it gives credence to what it is that we're, that we're looking at.
Okay.
So do we want to vote on this or do we really even need to vote on it because it's really just for our own purposes to have conversations?
Yeah, and we're going to, as long as this committee's okay with us doing the work and sharing it with finance and select board.
Do you want to take a vote just to cover?
Or if you would prefer that we don't share it with them until the meeting?
I think ahead of time, probably.
I would prefer ahead of time.
Figured, okay. So yeah, maybe just a vote.
When is that meeting, the 17th?
Seventeenth.
We don't have another two weeks.
Right, we need the 18th, so.
I just, I don't know if you'll want to see the updates before or you're good with us basically with that information and go.
And we can amend it in the future as well, but the information is not going to change for them.
When you share it to everybody, we're going to be included in on it anyway. So if we see something and we can talk about it on the 17th, like, hey, you know, this is the first time we're presenting this document to you, you know, now that we've seen it, we'd like to make some adjustments too. I mean, like it doesn't mean just because we're showing and sharing a document that it's the be all, end all. I think everything's.
Well, ultimately, I think I'd be fine if you wanted to share it with Jen. Like I think it'd be great for you and Jen and Stephanie, maybe as chair and vice chair to see it one more time before it's finally shared out. Like, and then if, you know, I don't think there'll be much for adjustments too, but I think if, I would hate to be in that meeting and be like, oh, this is, we haven't seen it updated, like that would just sound not so great, but.
Okay, so.
So we say we wanted a motion to.
Approve the document.
Approve the facilities maintenance overview and share.
I'll take a second.
Do we need to list who? Okay. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm just going to backtrack for a minute because I see Marcus this year and for, I'm assuming you're here for a student, a student update, yes, representative update. Do you all mind if we take a segue and so he doesn't have to wait till we go through the rest of the stuff?
Sounds good to me.
Come on up, Marcus.
Hi. How's it going? Good, how are you?
Pretty good, pretty good.
Good. All right. So we got, for this year, I am officially re-elected as your student representative as of yesterday. And so I met with Ms. Jordan yesterday and we did some pre-meet just to discuss a few things. In terms of this year, I plan on being here for the first meeting. If I can't, then I'll just throw the second one. And I'm thinking around like late winter, early spring, I can start trying, find someone, get him in here before I head out. I have three people that I'm thinking of at this moment, so hopefully one of them will take it if I can convince them to come with me to the one of these.
Have them watch one of the meetings on YouTube, how could they turn it down?
But through my whole process, come and sit down with Ms. Jordan every month and come to the meetings, just get to see how it works.
Perfect.
How many years have you been the student rep?
Three years, well, four years now.
This is your fourth.
Yeah, so it's fresh to be here.
Nicely done.
All right, let's get into my report then.
Go for it.
So we have the senior internship where the senior class will come over here and work with little kids and they get paid minimum wage. We have two new big classes this year, cybersecurity and 3D modeling. I know you guys heard about 3D modeling. I think that's an excellent class. I don't think any other school really offers, I've never heard of anything like that. I think that's very interesting and Mr. Hagan is very familiar with that stuff and really enjoys it, so I think that's a great opportunity for the kids. Of course, we have our sports going on and I would like to highlight the JV volleyball team for the girls as that's new this year. We used to only just have a varsity. All of the programs are performing great. We have the call for amlers, soccer for boys and girls, JV varsity, cross-country, the varsity volleyball. Of course, we have the student of the month returning, but students of the month, sorry. But we're introducing something new with the golden man, so that'll just be one student each month that especially is an example of one-star student, knowing him should be. The clubs are back up and running. We have the student council for both the junior high and the upperclassmen, GSA, yearbook. Yearbook is starting to plan and the charity pages. We have to have the senior photos in by the end of October and our first deadline is in December. We're working with the GSA and student advisory on repainting the dinosaur outfit. There'll be a survey and design a contest that'll go out this week, next, sorry. We have bystander upstander training, which is with Mass Partnership for Youth on November 2nd. All students will attend that and that's for bullying and training. The I- decide survey will go out on October 7th. It's a program that looks at instead of suspending a student for drug use, they get referred to and put into a program to assist them more than punish them. There'll be a door grading contest for Halloween for every A block class. The return of Ms. Jordan's themed days on Fridays, so we've had the Flan on Fridays, which is a pretty iconic themed day for us. And this Friday, we have wear pink for breast cancer because it's breast cancer awareness month. With that, the freshmen have also planned that every Wednesday they will wear pink as a class and the seniors have one day especially that they picked out, which was the 17th, just to raise awareness for breast cancer. The pathways, life school, life skills, sorry, is up and running. This is the first year that that's in the school. It's over by the art room, the SLC, and it's just a life skills course for kids with special needs in the school, which I think is really interesting and awesome opportunity again for those kiddos. We got a new vending machine for the kids. I noticed that that was empty last week, so that's a good sign that people are enjoying that one.
What's in the vending machine?
Nothing.
Nothing anymore, yeah. No, it's restocked, I love. They have chips, some like popcorn, the switch little soda things, they're not soda, but.
Seltzer.
Yeah, seltzer. There was some pomegranate soda that I was wondering about, not soda, again, seltzer and such.
Yeah, I think I saw like clip bars and stuff like that.
Like healthier, they're not like Twix and.
Right.
Damn.
That's in the.
That's in the TGI.
And then we got the principals list, the 21st of October, that'll be at the high school. And then we also have weekly college visits where a representative comes to the school and gets to talk to the kids that possibly want to go to that school. So then you just sign up in the.
Guide?
Yeah, in guidance. And then you get your pass, you just go down. I attended the Mass Amers one last week. It's just a general information, basically, you can ask any questions. Can I stop again?
Any questions for Marcus?
You hit the first one on my list, which was, I know you've been doing this as long as I've been coming to these, so I was like, hang on, how are you going to start training someone new? That's what I wrote on here. I was like, who's the in-training? But you answered it right away, so I know, got big shoes to fill, they do.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
Okay, um, next up is the CES Capital Reserve Fund.
Do you want me to? I can talk about it probably as best I can and then if you want to fill in any gaps that I miss or mess up. All right, so in the CES meeting on the 21st, there was continued discussion, and I think I had brought it up in one of my updates, but there was just continued discussion about a capital reserve fund that CES is trying to put together. Essentially, what they need is a, each school committee to kind of take a vote on if they would support this option and they need two-thirds majority of their member school committees to vote to approve. Essentially, what they're trying to use as kind of capital to start this is the loan forgiveness from the payroll protection loan that they had applied for back in the midst of most COVID time and use some of that money and put that into the capital reserve fund. They talked about the fact that, you know, they recently paid off loans for their buildings and they have to do kind of obviously maintenance and upkeep and they're running programs with, with students out of district placements and then obviously they provide some programming and other resources for member districts. You can see the information there as well as they have central office staff and they house, you know, offices and things like that as well. And so essentially what they're looking for from us is to kind of review this information and decide whether or not we would be willing to vote to approve or disapprove the request.
And it comes at no additional cost to the district, to the member districts.
And they did make a point of that too, noting that they have not increased their student, like their membership fees and things like that. They have increased rates and fees in other areas, but not to like the district's membership rates and things like that, so this would not impact like either way.
All right, any questions for Jill on this? It seems like a good idea to me for them to be able to have that.
Yeah, they talked about just basically not having the funding to be able to do this previously and they also talked about being able to take some of the funds as well and not put it into the capital reserve, but be able to, they can carry over, I think, up to 25% of, you know, previous year's funding into their next year's budget and they have been very limited in their ability to do that up until kind of this point when they've been in a better place. So they hopefully will be able to kind of move some of the funding in that direction and potentially in this direction as well and be able to plan much more effectively for, you know, their students, their staff and member districts.
I guess unless I'm missing something, my only question was, I understand how it's going to start and that's great, but is there kind of a plan on how they're going to keep being able to build on it once, does that make sense?
Or even pay back the loan, like.
They don't, they don't have to pay back any of the loan, it's because it's forgiveness. I think their hope is by continuing to offer services and being a resource that they'll be able to continue to offer things out there that people want to take advantage of, but I don't know that, that this opportunity will ever come up like this again. So I think it's just trying to be very mindful and thoughtful about what they do have and allocate it appropriately.
Jump on the opportunity that's here, something's great. So if whoever wants to make the motion, the language is on the back of the sheet that Jill gave us all.
Under the proposed motion?
Yeah. I'll take someone to read that aloud to make the motion.
I'll take a stab at it. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the creation of the collaborative for educational services capital reserve account with a balance limit of $5 million for the purpose of accumulating funds for the acquisition, maintenance and improvement of capital items.
Can I have a second? Come on, George.
I am holding out intentionally.
All right, awesome. And all those in favor?
Aye. Sorry to put you on the spot. If you want to use that one and do it that way, yeah, however we want to do it, but perfect.
I am not the school committee secretary.
Yeah, they said your chair is fine.
Okay.
Because we said, we talked about that.
Does this flow through students' office or do I give it back to you?
Thank you.
There we go.
Jen, you might have just moved up, transfer of funds.
Sure, go ahead. So we're all set with CES. We're going to now skip to letter E, vote to transfer funds.
So we discussed as a budget finance, so we, a student that we had originally allocated money for to send out of district and will now be returning to districts and will need a paraprofessional, so we would like to transfer some of the savings from that tuition line to fund that paraprofessional.
Any questions? Okay, I have the language for the motion, so I can read it and someone can stay still moved if they'd like. Motion to transfer $20,260.43 from the special ed tuition line to the East Meadow paraprofessional salary line.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
That's just a para, a step five, middle of the road salary for a place over.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Next is superintendent goals.
So I did drop this in your folder today. I know we had some back and forth in our last meeting about goals with the capacity piece too, so I'm happy to share them with you, take feedback and bring them back or if you feel like they are ready to be approved, I'm happy to move forward with them as well. So identified three district improvement goals. Really a lot of this is being built off the work that we're already doing from the, my report of entry findings that I presented last spring and the work, the ongoing work that we're doing. So I had, like I said, three district improvement goals, student learning goal. I should note the student learning goal, I did list as a two-year goal. I could see it taking a little bit longer. It's fairly broad, but I think specific enough. And professional practice goal, I continue to be a part of the new superintendent induction program. And professional practice goal, I continue to be a part of the new superintendent induction program. So that is one that is the same as last year, continuing to my professional development as a participant in that program. I don't know if you want me to read them all, or if you just.
I think you can.
I hear you guys can.
I don't think you need to read to us. If anyone object, do you want him to read them out?
Appreciate that.
So what do we, are there any questions or thoughts on these comments, discussion?
The only thing that I thought of while reading it, oh, hang on, let me reread now. No, I'm good. Never mind.
I just have a question about the student learning goal. So I know that you talk about the professional development plan and working on the implementation about the Wonders curriculum at East Meadow, and then using other available data, tier-two interventions, and benchmark assessments. Are all kind of the key actions in two through five going to be the focus for math to achieve that kind of 90% of students demonstrating growth?
In math and.
And ELE. Is there, are there anything with, is there anything within the Wonders curriculum in terms of assessments that you're gonna utilize as well, or is it all going to be? I guess that's just my only question. Like, is there anything in part of the math curriculum assessments that are kind of lumped into two through five, or is it?
So I think it's a good question and one that I thought about in developing these. So the math curriculum is something that we're working to address this year, putting together a selection committee and review some options, and then hope to move forward with a new math curriculum. So I didn't include that specifically because that work is, that's part of the work that we plan to be doing this year. I could foresee that curriculum, if all goes well this year, being one of the key actions next year. But since we don't know what it is, I didn't include it.
Okay.
But I think it's a fair question, so that's where I think the interventions, our response to the data and the benchmark assessments in math, like what do those look like? How do we strengthen those while we're exploring core curricular options?
Yeah, because it was only K through five that got the new ELE core, right?
Yes.
Is this curriculum? Never mind, I don't, we don't need to go down to the danger.
My only question that I did pop up again is, because I was rereading through them, is, and I don't know if it needs it, but a date on the district improvement goal number three. Do we need to, do you need to have dates by whatever, 2023?
Yeah, that's a.
I know. It's ongoing, right.
Because I do think it's ongoing, but.
For sure, but like for goal purposes, does it need to state?
Yeah, I also, I guess, a question to you all. Like, I felt like that's a really important one, and a, like, I wanna have it, but the measurability of that is challenging, right?
I feel like.
In some ways, it's.
So like you would almost like have to write that you would have contacted, reached out, or met with them at, like, once per, I don't know, like you could make it once per month, whatever.
Yeah.
To have quarterly, or whatever the case may be. I think that would be the way, it would have to be measurable, like, yes, met on this date, this date, this date, discussed XYZ.
And I, I'm totally fine saying like by May or June 2023. Like, these are ones where I think, you know, if I haven't met the goal, I anticipate that we'll have made progress or significant progress. And that might be enough to say that's not gonna be one of my core goals next year. Or if you haven't made that progress, maybe we're tweaking that and adjusting it. I guess I think of the goals, and I, as a principal, I used to talk to staff all the time, that it's like set goals that even if you don't meet, your progress is going to put you in a better place than if you're saying, oh, 5% of my students will demonstrate this. Well, maybe if we say 50% of my students will demonstrate that, maybe we get to 25. Then we wouldn't have got there if our target was at 5%. So like, I think this is an ongoing goal, but one considering where we are in terms of the capital improvement requests, the pending statement of interest from MSBA. I think it's one that I would, I think I need to have on here in some way, shape, or form.
Okay. I guess it kind of made me start thinking more, because do you follow the same SMART Ts? Like even the E equitable and all of that on there too? Yes?
Yes, I, I try to, I aim to, yes.
Okay. Because that's like, I just had to do this myself, so that's why it's already in my head of how they're worded, making sure that we're covering all of those bases.
Yep.
I don't know if that's something that we should provide in the going forward? What all of those, like, does everybody else know S, SMART E, IE, what all they mean?
Well, Jen rattled off what a SMART goal was, I think, at one meeting.
They changed it a couple of years ago, and now it's SMART T goals.
I don't know what the.
I E.
I E is.
Inclusion and equability, equability, just that wrong.
I am so brain-dead right now. All I remember is measurable. Time-bound, that's all I can remember for SMART. That's what I got, that's what I got left for today.
Maybe we can throw something in like the resource folder, just to.
I, I like these goals mostly because I feel like it's, you've really captured some of the things that we've been, you know, talking about for a while, so. I do like Audrey's update for number three, pointing something that's got some kind of a date in there. And I don't, I know you just said something, but I wasn't sure.
I just put in May 2023, but.
Okay.
And like I said, I didn't know that it necessarily had to be, whether that was a discussion. If everyone else thinks it doesn't need to be, I'm fine with that too, just.
I think good practice would say that it should be timed.
Okay.
And then the last one for the professional practice, it's, you're not in your first year for the new superintendent, so I don't know if that should be updated, you know, because I know that is for a three-year program, so you should be actually in the second year.
In the second year.
Right?
That was feedback, I got someone else and I missed it, or something? Yes.
With those minor updates, are we ready to take a vote? Or do you all wanna sit and marinate on them and come back next time? Oh, I thought we were ready to vote on them, which is why we brought them forward again.
Yep, so this was your first read of them, so you can waive the first read and vote, or if people wanted to get feedback over the next two weeks, then vote officially in the 18th.
That's.
I'm fine either way.
I'm fine with voting now. I just also wanted to say that I really appreciate, and I'm gonna mess up the goal it is, the goal number two, because we spent a lot of time last, well, in May or June, talking about data and like what's going to happen with it as next step, so I really, really appreciate that emphasis.
Thank you. So if we are all in agreement, we can, I think we have to do a two-part vote. First to waive the first read, and then second for the vote. So I'll take a motion to waive the first read.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And now I'll take a motion to approve the superintendent goals.
I'll make the motion to approve the superintendent goals for the 2022-2023 school year.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Excellent.
Thank you.
Good. Alright, moving right along, enrollment dashboard.
So, you'll see similar numbers to last month. We did see a net loss of two students. We had four students withdraw. One in pre-K, one in K. The one in K was to a private school, one in sixth grade to a private school, and then one in 10th grade to a vocational school. And then we had two students actually return from private school in 7th grade and 10th grade. So our overall number from the August data was 728 students. We're now at 726 students.
So I have a question that's not really 100% about enrollment dashboard, but it sort of is. So I'm just gonna ask it, and we can, you guys can all tell me. So when students go to Pathfinder or Smith Vote, that is considered school choice?
No.
So what, where are those, like, how is that? So is that?
So we typically, like, we're only capturing that.
So withdrawn for vocational, it's either.
So like this month, we're capturing that. That one we won't see again unless they return from vocational.
And just to make sure that I understand, because I've been asked this recently, Pathfinder is our vocational school for our district?
Yes, we have a regional agreement with.
Is if the program is not at Pathfinder, can they go to any vocational school? Or is it, is the next up Smith?
It's so.
Because I thought we were at the point that everything that we had at Pathfinder matched up with what was at, no, Smith Vote.
I know that we're there, so.
They're the only school in Western Mass that even offers like agriculture. No other school has that.
Yeah, they have like an animal science program. Westfield Tech has a aeronautics concentration. So, so what happens in those cases are, their students are supposed to, by April 1st, or families or caregivers are supposed to by April 1st apply, fill out basically this non-resident Chapter 74 application. So they submit it to us. If they do it by April 1st, and there truly isn't a program mirrored, typically you're signing off and allowing them to go to Westfield Tech or Smith, or whatever that might be.
So they apply to us to go to Pathfinder?
Yes. No, because we have an agreement with Pathfinder. Pathfinder basically has a formula on how many students, give or take, that they would be accepting from a community. Our students apply to Pathfinder like any other student would, and based on their numbers and the eligibility requirements, students are accepted or.
Okay, and then if a student applies directly to Smith Vocational, are they, and it's a program that is already mirrored, are they supposed to be referred back to Pathfinder?
So they probably won't be referred back to Pathfinder, but that's where I could deny them on that Chapter 74 non-resident application. I would deny it. And if DESI were to contact us, I could then articulate that we have a regional agreement with Pathfinder, and the same program's offered there. So sometimes it happens in 9th grade if they're looking for exploratory.
I was just gonna say, so a question to follow up on that, like, so say, for example, just because I know the school quite well, if you go there as a 9th grader, you have to go through exploratory. So you can't say, I'm 100% gonna go to animal science. You actually, as a 9th grader, don't have that ability. You have to go through all the shops, and then you apply for your top three, and then you go to those. And sometimes you have to even apply within those if there's a lot of interest.
Yep. So we would typically, in the past, we've denied based on that because Pathfinder offers an exploratory. DESI, the family can appeal to DESI, and DESI could overrule my denial.
Because I guess, so say you were interested in animal science, but then you did your top, your top three, you ended up picking plumbing. Now it's already January, February by this time, because it takes a long time, I believe, to get through that exploratory process. Maybe Jan, maybe it's before January, but it is a few months, because you actually have to go to each shop, and you spend two weeks at each top three. At what point can we even, how would we even know?
Yeah, it's hard, but there is a process that you can follow, but it's.
I mean, it seems like not daunting.
It can get a little messy. So we actually have a student who was in a program outside of Pathfinder. Based on circumstances, we approved that they could attend where they attended last year. They did not get into the program that they had intended to. They sent me a new Chapter 74 form that I had to sign, and I denied it at that point because they were now in a program that Pathfinder offered. It doesn't always happen that way. Like, we need to be on top of it where we're reaching out sometimes, even though personally, I feel like it should be the reverse, that sending schools should be reaching back out if they're not in. And unfortunately, it's not the best checks and balance system.
Right, I was gonna say, so unfortunately, it gets a little gray, is what I was getting at. It's not.
It gets gray.
It's not as easy as, I'm in 9th grade, I'm going to this program and sign off and.
Yeah, and the tuition is the same, because it's set by the state, but transportation becomes.
Yeah. So the reason I'm asking is because I just wanna make sure that if we're saying, when I see withdrawn for vocational, my assumption is that that is a Pathfinder student. But it may not be a Pathfinder student, but it doesn't necessarily matter, because the tuition is the same. It will just see if there is an issue for transportation, because.
Right, this one is a Pathfinder student.
We have the.
This one is a Pathfinder student, in this instance.
When we have the Smith Vote one, there's always that separate transportation item.
Correct.
And that won't ever go away, right? And because the.
We reach out to the families to see if they're going to access the transportation. So two years ago, there was an older sibling that brought the students, and they didn't access transportation. This year, there are two students at Smith, one of them is accessing the transportation.
Okay. Alright, so that's sort of.
It's cloudy.
Well, it touches on the enrollment thing, because I saw the new withdrawn, and I was like, so. Because I've been hearing people talk about some of this, and I was like, nope, that's actually not right. And I just wanted to make sure that.
Well, you're trying to address the way the funding works, right? So it's not like we pay out for them, we, that's not like, it's the way it's, like, the funding stays the same. It's just moved into a different box, right? Like, it's not like we pay extra.
We pay, transportation is where we would pay extra. But the rate is set at, it's about $19,000, $18,000.
But it's not considered a true school choice out. It's just considered a withdrawn, like, for a private school. There's no reimbursement, but we do pay tuition.
So we get the money in Chapter 70.
Do we only get the $5,000, or do we get the full amount?
No, we get, they're technically our student, so we get the money, we get the Chapter 70 money for them.
Okay. Alright, still clear of my, but I'll save that for another time. Any other questions on the dashboard? Okay.
Come on, hang on.
Do you have one?
I thought I did.
I'm gonna go get set up up there and keep looking at this.
Yeah, I don't remember. Three, one.
Can I just reiterate how much I love this, just having?
Yeah, it's so good.
No, I'm good.
Are you sure?
Yep, I'm fine.
Okay. Are you thinking?
Yes.
I want, it's golden here.
Oh, you know what it was? Services only for K. I think that's what it was. Tuition, non-resident tuitioned enrollment, services only. Is that K or pre-K? K, zero K. Right? Yes.
Yep.
I don't feel like that was there before.
I wasn't in it anymore, so if you could just tell me where you're at?
Resident, non-resident, tuitioned enrollment, left-hand side.
A row? Got it, got it, got it. Services only.
That was only, that was what it was. I knew there was something. I was like, hang on.
I wonder if there's a student that is either homeschooled or schooling somewhere else that comes in just for service. I wonder if there's a student that is either homeschooled or schooling somewhere else that comes in just for services.
I remember, I feel like I gently heard about something about that. But would that be what that is if it says services only for kindergarten? It's a school, like...
Could be homeschool or, right, because kindergarten is not required, but they still came through early interventions eventually that were providing services.
Okay, you're welcome.
Now they are...
So then I, okay, go ahead.
Now I was gonna say, if they're doing services only, they're not a resident?
They are a resident, but they're not a full-time student.
But they would be in the class size for next year, potentially?
Potentially.
Or not, because if they're being homeschooled, that just might be their chosen. I guess to them, now my question was, were they part of the 726 that we get reimbursed?
That is a fair question to ask.
Okay, because... Well, it tech, hang on that last...
I think it depends on how they're coded, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because here, I feel like they are, it's part of 726. When you look at, on the grand total...
It would make 36, okay?
Right.
Yeah, so they're probably coded that way then.
Because when you go down all the totals, the 726 is there.
I will confirm it and I'll include it in the update this week. Does that work?
Yeah, that was my only, it was like, "Hang on," there was something that kind of caught my eye.
Fair question.
Any other questions?
I'm good. I'm sorry.
Hey, so everybody should have this in their folder and I know I shared it out with you guys a couple of times last week. So again, the school committee had asked a few questions of us around this discussion around the East Meadow capacity. And my intention and the intention of the leadership team was to answer those questions as best as we can. And if there's follow-up questions here that we can't answer, we can always come back. So these were the questions. I think we went over them originally at our retreat on September 6th and then a couple of things were added or tweaked at our September 20th meeting. So we'll go through these and then there's also some census information and some programmatic information at the end that I included that wasn't specific to any questions, but just some added context. So the first question that we tried to tackle was would the instructional staff need to move, if the sixth grade were to be moved to the junior, senior high school? Answer overall is yes. Some instructional staff would absolutely need to be moved if the sixth grade were to be moved. We anticipate at least two to three full-time positions would need to shift. Although it's difficult to predict, depending on class size and things like that, that number or student need, that number could shift over three, but it might not get to that full four either, right? It might be sharing positions between the two buildings and things like this. A couple of things as I'm starting to touch on that you want to consider. The needs would dictate how the FTEs would be distributed, so it wouldn't always result in that 1.0 being moved. So might we need some additional art next door? Or might we need some additional phys ed next door based on the student need? It's possible that a teacher from here might have to take some of that class to travel. The current structure at the junior, senior high school, we have four sections of high school classes that are taught by core seventh and eighth grade teachers. We have nine sections of seventh and eighth grade exploratory and enrichment classes taught by core seventh and eighth graders, or eighth grade teachers. So to talk about that a little bit, like the impact there, to be honest, is likely greater than just the FTEs. Because for example, we currently have a middle school teacher teaching a high school science class. So high school science, we have a three-year requirement for graduation, so they need to successfully complete three years. A student who is not on a physics or biology trajectory could take this forensics class and fulfill their requirement for their science, for their graduation requirement right now. So they could do that, right? So, but if that science teacher now has to teach a sixth grade section or another seventh or another eighth grade section, and then we have an English teacher, seventh and eighth grade English teacher who's teaching a high school English class, right? Like, I think some of you are starting to see, it's not just like one person can teach one math, one science, one social studies. It's, we have people in content areas who are coming out of the middle school courses to teach a high school course. So the impact could be greater because of those specific needs.
And so it's a flip side too, because you're taking, I mean, there's, there are some shared resources here. So if you are taking teachers from this building and going to that building, that would be an impact here as well, right?
Potentially. So like this year, we have two dedicated sixth grade teachers who are only with the sixth grade all day. So if the sixth grade were to go with them, the impact from losing those two individuals would be minimal because the students that they were working with would be there. But in special education or things like that, that could come up, right? Where a special education teacher who's working with fifth and sixth grade may now need to shift for part of their day next door.
Now, in a more traditional middle school, would sixth grade work in sections like that? Or would they still stay with one teacher? Okay. I did read it, but then I feel like now as you're explaining it, now I'm starting to question what I read. So, okay.
Yeah, we'll get, yeah, we'll get there. And if you still have the question when we get there, I would say ask it.
Okay.
There's one other question. If the schedule at the high school would look, the schedule at the high school would look more like the high school schedule than the current East Meadow schedule. Next year, was there talk about going to like a four-block schedule?
So there is conversation happening at the high school right now about the schedule, about if it would be a four-by-four block schedule, long block or short block. And I am not the right person to ask whether that would impact sixth, seventh, and eighth or if that would only impact nine through 12, and I don't even know if they've gotten to that point in the conversation yet.
Because I believe it was brought up at student council and I had heard like, right, that was a big question. So can a sixth grader do a four-block schedule? That's a very different schedule.
Yeah. Essentially, their current schedule looks more like a four-block schedule because they're with the same people all day.
Right.
So teacher licensure would be another potential issue. Like we just actually went through a situation where somebody had, tell me if I'm wrong, Ellie or Todd, had an eight-through-12 license, but also had their one-through-six license and was hired to teach seventh grade. So it was like the one-grade area that they didn't have, so they had to apply for another license to cover that. So because of the way the licensure runs, it goes up to sixth grade, some people have the eight-through-12. There could be some impact on that. Once you start to dig into that, it's tough to tell, right? Who would be moved, how they would be moved, seniority, the union, and everybody would have to get involved in that. Some teachers might be willing to get an additional license, like we haven't approached those subjects with individual teachers or anything yet. And again, next door, they have content-specific license. Here, the license is more general for most people, although some people who work here have a content license as well.
So if you're saying, explain to me, because I don't understand the licensure 100%, so when you say content-specific, so if they're a math teacher, they have a math license, is that for K to 12?
It could be K to 12, but they might have a general curriculum, one-through-six license that they're working on here that is, would be more challenging to use if they were next door.
But they, how would they be, if they have a one-through-six license, how would they be able to teach? They'd only be able to teach sixth grade next door.
Right. Unless, again, there's a process now that allows people to teach 50% outside their license, so you could flex them in that way too, and it depends on teacher's willingness and all those things.
And the union and everything else, right? Okay. So the other question that I have, I might just have to, I have a bunch of license questions as you're going through this, but I will try to keep them in, out, just have a call with you after.
Okay.
I think that we'll go down around a hole. Sorry, sorry.
No problem. This is only the second slide, so there's plenty of time for questions. So this came up around food services and challenges at the junior, senior high school. So would additional students create additional food service challenges? So potentially, we did talk to Ken at Chartwell's. He believes it's doable and would be willing to make it work, but additional students adds to an already challenging situation as we're all aware of. Two actions he identified that may be helpful in this situation would be adding another staff member, an approval from the Board of Health to use the existing serving lines. That's something I think we mentioned last meeting and the meeting before. Adam is trained to work with Dick Bombadil from the Board of Health. We actually spoke with him yesterday on another issue and anticipate him coming in. So some of this stuff would benefit us next door with or without the sixth grade coming, so to be fully transparent. Both of these actions would allow for a better flow to the lunch service line. Adding the sixth grade, adding the sixth grade to the junior, senior high school could also result in a change in the lunch schedule, which could result in a better flow in each lunch, but the demand would be the same for the food service staff. So again, like would we end up needing a six, seven, eight lunch and then a nine-through-12 lunch? Or would we do three lunches? Three lunches, I think we would all tell you who work, who've worked in the classroom is not ideal. Oftentimes, a third lunch means you're doing a lunch in the middle of a block, which means you have X amount of time before lunch with your teacher, go to lunch, and then you have time after. So I think that is not ideal, but it's something that we've used in Granby before. But again, that depends, like this year's sixth grade class is on the smaller side with the two classes. So that might be different than the fourth grade class that's in the low 60s, mid 60s. So some of that would depend on the numbers. Impact on the sixth grade curriculum? So one thing that's been pointed out, I think, over time in this discussion is most of the curriculum and most curricular options, and DESI breaks things down. Typically, middle school, high school grades, it's typically six through eight and then they do like nine, 10, 11, 12. By having teachers in grade six through eight on the same schedule would allow for common planning time, targeted professional development, improved vertical alignment. The current structure has present, has prevented the sixth grade from accessing some opportunities through certain grants. As Sue explained to me, this is really due in part to the sixth grade schedule being more aligned with the K to five schedule. So they're not having the, a specific amount, although I think this year's schedule shifts this a little bit. Having specific time, science is the example that we discussed. Because they don't have specifically time dedicated to science every day, they don't need that time for structured learning in science, so the grant wouldn't, they couldn't access money through the grant or opportunities through the grant.
Wait. What? Wait, you're saying the sixth graders aren't getting enough science learning time right now?
They're getting enough legally, but it's not enough to, it's not the same amount that they're getting next door. So every day next door, they're getting 49 minutes. Here, oftentimes, science and social studies will rotate and things like that. And then sixth grade next door could benefit from having different curriculum options than they do at East Meadow. Again, through Project Lead the Way courses, although I will say, we have written a grant and got approved through our K to five Project Lead the Way. Sixth grade kind of ends up in no man's land because the automation and robotics class and design and modeling, which we offer next door, can't be replicated in the sixth grade model. Teachers haven't had the training. The resources are specific to those classroom needs. So we could think creatively, but that's been a sticking point to date.
I have a quick question. It's just stuck out to me. The targeted professional development, six to eight. When we have the PD days, they do happen the same day, right?
Yep.
Is there a reason that sixth grade in the past hasn't been able to go over and collaborate with the seventh, eighth grader teachers?
Yeah, so I think PD days are just a portion of it really, so we really only have three full PD days. But the half-days and the hours of power, which add up significantly, right? The time differences end up meaning that, right? Because East Meadow is here an hour later than the junior, senior high school. So if the sixth grade were to participate with the seventh and eighth grade, we're either having to get coverage for the sixth grade teachers so that they could be there or they're arriving late and missing out on things like that.
Okay. And then the only other question, not question, I guess statement about the impact of curriculum would be just to highlight kind of what specials would look like. I feel like some of this, it's super helpful and it is, but a lot of it is targeted on if they move over there. I'd also like, kind of like to see a balance of if they don't, what it looks like. That's just...
Right, and, right, this was the question that I saw.
Right, no, no, no. No, I know.
I'm happy to go back and maybe the second slide might answer that.
No, yep, it'll answer on the next slide. It just kind of plays onto that one. I jumped the, done a little bit.
So when we're saying that they could take automation and robotics and design and modeling as sixth grade, then that's taking away choices that they would have had in seventh and eighth grade. Right? So like some of the benefits of having those classes were extra...
Well, Project Lead the Way is a six-to-eight, isn't it? They're just not able to access it right now because they're here, not there. So it's designed to be six through eight.
It's a, yeah, the project launch is their six-through-eight, project gateway, I'm sorry, is their six-through-eight curriculum.
But wasn't last meeting during the presentation, didn't we hear that there was a lot of interest that there wasn't enough time?
3D printing.
Oh, that's 3D printing, sorry. So it's a different...
That was upperclassmen, right? That was only nine-through-12?
Yep, right, currently.
So we're confident that there would be time in the schedule and staff to provide those classes, potentially?
Because of how the schedule gets set up, it looks more like the schedule at the junior, senior high school. They would rotate through things for either a semester or quarter or trimester, typically semester or quarter, so that they would have some opportunities to get into those. Yep. So here's what a day might look like for the sixth grade. Appreciate Todd and Ellie's work on this. In their own words, this is a pretty rudimentary schedule, so things could change, right? Like the fact that math, science, social studies are all in the morning, that may not always be true. Like the specials blocks could get mixed into the day. But those last three classes would really provide them opportunities to get exposed to different specials over the course of the year, again, either quarterly or by semester. So they might have art every day for one semester, right? The difference here is they have art one day every week over the course of the year, or phys ed one day every week over the course of the year. So they would have these three courses, they could have them every day for a quarter or a semester. And then you'll see the asterisk next to the opportunity for an academic support block. So if a student had an IEP or there was an identified intervention need, we would have some flexibility with those three blocks so that we could target individual student needs. I did list the current junior, senior high school start and end times, 7:30 to 1:58. Transportation options are fairly similar, I guess, except for the third one, which wouldn't apply to sixth grade. The parent drop-off or the bus are currently, we have seven through 12 on the seven buses that we run. And then students with vehicles are assigned a parking space in the student lot. So that wouldn't apply to sixth grade, at least in most cases.
Only one question that I have that I didn't see on there was start time, end time changes.
It's what's right there, 7:30 as opposed to 8:15.
Oh, my word, sorry.
So you said this is for a semester, like the sample schedule?
It could be a semester or it could be a quarter depending on... It could be a semester, or it could be a quarter depending on the specials. So, they could have PE and art, then they could have film and computers, and then they could have span it, right? Like, over the course of the year. I think some of those things are going to depend on the numbers, whether it is a semester or a quarter.
So, because I just have no idea of the middle school schedule, do currently, does seventh and eighth grade have like a two specials, like PE, like on seventh grade, it says PE and computers? Is that common right now, every semester for the whole year?
Yeah, they change. Like, Mary has, she's in eighth grade, but last year she had, let's see if I can remember. She had like creative writing and study skills were her, too. And they, they split.
She probably went to phys ed and...
Maybe a health class? Like, you know, so it was like...
More like electives.
Yep.
Yeah. Right. Those ones were, like, she didn't get to choose.
Right, they're not choosing as much as the nine through 12, but there's some variety.
Also had forensics, too, which was, you know, in seventh grade.
Right.
But also still had a science, so.
So, they just do move, though? Like, you wouldn't have a PE, a STEM and art all year long in that same setup?
No, no, not, I mean, in a very rare case, a student could end up having art or PE for a full year depending on some skill, but it's pretty rare that those things happen.
But they might, they'll have art or gym every day for a semester. And then they'll, they get flapped. So, they don't get it just once a week, like you were saying. So, that's... The school bus question, I think we had asked before. So, we have the seven buses, seven through 12. Can we accommodate the sixth graders on buses?
Next door currently, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think Ally said in a different conversation today that there's two or three buses with probably a dozen or fewer students.
So, the most that might do is just make the pickup time earlier because they're going to have to extend their route. But, that happens occasionally, anyway.
Yeah, and I think, right, our ridership, especially once you get to grade 11, like, drops off. There's not many upperclassmen riding, because they're driving, their friends are driving.
Or they just don't want to ride the bus anymore?
Right, and we do get quite a few parent drop offs. I do think ridership at East Meadow is up this year compared to last year. Just, I mean, that's really a qualitative look at it. We haven't gone to the numbers yet. Actually, we talked about that in a meeting earlier today. But, ridership definitely seems to have increased a little bit at East Meadow, but not at the high school. So, recess was a question that came up in the past. I think that's something that definitely looks different. It wouldn't be 20-minute lunch, 20-minute recess. Their kind of lunch and recess is in this 25-minute time period. They do have morning break next door. And then, I think currently, the middle school teachers especially, but I think really all the teachers do a good job of like encouraging, like using the outdoor spaces and encouraging movement breaks and things like that. But, it is different than the typical recess, for sure.
Quick question, though. Would they be traversing through the building as they're going from class? Not through the building, I don't want to like, but, like, with the ELA, math, science, like...
Oh, no, they're moving classes.
Right. Where like, right now, they're pretty much in, I mean, I know the sixth graders move minimally between the two.
Yeah, but like here right now, math, if math and science are back to back, it's literally like, all right, put away your math and take out your science, or they would switch classes there. Yes. So, this was one, I think Jill brought up this question a couple of weeks ago. And, these things could happen if the sixth grade remains at East Meadow. These are not in any order. I highlighted them here in yellow. These options are listed in no particular order. And different options may be used in different years depending on the circumstances. So, there is certainly some variability and some unpredictability here with what might get used. And there's also years where none of these options might have to be used based on the numbers that we have. Again, class sizes, it could be impacted. Two examples that I listed would be, you know, there could be a potential from having to go three classes to two classes, which would create larger classes potentially, unbalanced classes, right? So, there's been a lot of conversation about some of the room spaces. So, I just gave an example for a class of 58. We might have to do 21, 21, and 16, right? If we identify we can fit 16 students in one of those smaller classes, and that's our, that's our number, then we said, those class, those smaller classes don't typically have cubbies and things, but that could be a purchase, that we buy cubbies and set them up in that space that I think many of you have said, like, if they had just extended this wall, this other six feet, we wouldn't be here having this problem. That's where the cubbies could go and things like that on the other side of the wall. So, specials classes could lose their dedicated space. Alternative spaces may need to be used for instructional spaces. Example behind the stage, the computer lab, stage in the cafeteria, the common area, the foyer, are spaces that could be discussed. Teachers may need to switch from one grade level to another year after year. That's not uncommon right now. There's, right, as we've gone from three classes to two classes to three classes, people have had to switch back from sixth grade to fifth grade. So, that might not be a new thing, but that may continue to happen. And that could happen even if they were to move next door in some scenarios as well. Rotating spaces, so flexible scheduling. So, one of the examples we said was, so, the library doesn't have, like, an assigned class first thing in the morning. So, if we needed a third sixth grade this year, they may come in the library, do attendance, and as the fourth grade class comes into the library, the sixth grade class would take that fourth grade class and the teacher would have to travel with them. So, like, some really flexible scheduling. You know, when art's not in session, that could be an instructional space. We could reduce the, our current level of pre-K and K programming to make available additional spaces. I think there's certainly some concerns if that were the route. I think, to the point down here, this is listed in no order, really. I think we're getting close to a place where this would be like a last option. So, in full transparency, that wouldn't, I don't think that would ever be like, hey, let's do this first before we do anything else, because the impact of that is, has layers and layers and could be years long. And then, I think, keeping the sixth grade here, there's a chance to create some leadership opportunities for the sixth grade that may not have been present previously. Creating a fifth and sixth grade student council, creating sixth grade buddies for our kindergartners or first graders, so like, a buddy system, things like that. Not that those are solutions to the space, but I think things that could look different than they might currently. This is how the rooms and spaces are currently being used. So, right, the numbers here or the letters are just what the, what grade is currently using that space. The highlighted yellow areas are spaces that I talked about. A couple that I talked about on previous slides. So, like, this one I didn't talk about on a previous slide. This is like a really tight space. It's where our team leader is now. So, it's enough for a desk and a table for meetings, but like, that wouldn't be a full classroom instructional space. Even that number, I think, what did I say before, 21, 21, 16? Like, a 16 wouldn't fit in there. But, I do think a 16 could fit in this space. And this is one of those spaces that I think people have paid some particular attention to over the past couple of years. Stage, this is the media center in the library, the computer lab in the library. And then, I did note, one of the current pre-K spaces is used for pre-K half of the day and support services for the other half of the day. So, it could be more, we could be more flexible with that. Jill made a good point at the last meeting, though, that pre-K can be like a fickle group to deal with, because depending on when they turn age three and if there's services that need to be provided, we could end up getting an influx of students at less than ideal times over the course of the year that we might have to accommodate.
It wasn't until I was reading this slide at home that I had a moment of, like, that pre-K, that's half day, because how many kids are in like, it's three half-day sessions, right?
Yep.
And there's like 35 kids, so, however many. And like, you know, those extra small rooms that can fit instead of doing a 21, 21, 16, like, my mind started turning. Like, you know, do you...
Yeah, and we talked about this could be, this could be two half-days in a full day. I think one of the concerns...
Put that one half-day session, smaller room versus, I don't know.
I think one of the concerns, and I brought that up, was bathrooms and sinks in the space, but I think we could work around those.
I know, I know.
Well, pre-K is up to a certain age, right? Like, we're talking, you know, so you could have the rooms with the, I mean, if you wanted to get right down to it, like the video.
But, do they have to have bathrooms in them? But, you know what I mean? It's one of those, it's, trust me, well-needed. I miss having one now that I'm not in kinder anymore where I had my own bathroom, you know? So, I get it.
These are just program descriptions. I think people that, we've talked about ABA and SLC, and we use these acronyms. So, I only listed the East Meadow ones. I don't know where my head was at when I did that. I could add the junior, senior high school ones, but they're similar. There's an SLC next door, Pathways is the big brother, sister to ABA. I won't read all of them, too. Pre-K programming talks a little bit about the related services and integrated preschool. It does talk about the ratio, right? We could have up to 15 students, seven with disabilities and eight peer role models. We could push that number to 20 if we only had five students with disabilities. But, we can't predict that. And then, the last thing, the last bit of information we got, this is up-to-date census information. There's a lot going on here, too. So, these first three, this 4-3-2 are in bold. They would be pre-K eligible most likely during this school year, so they could come, right? There's some that, Megan keeps describing it as, there's three groups for pre-K. Pre-K four, pre-K three, and the group that will be three for the next school year. So, like, that's how we look at it. So, these are the groups that could be pre-K eligible this year. So, our age five turning six, our current kindergarten group was 46 in this census that we just got two weeks ago. It was 42 when we got that census number last year. Our enrollment as of 9/30, although I think it might be 36 now, is 37. So, again, there is some, I think Jen said it a few times, there's some unpredictability, right? We can have the census numbers, we can have that, like, there's some change in every census number from last year to this year. And then, you have to weigh what the actuals are, right? So, this is one that we have where we know it was 46, I'm sorry, it was 42, went up to 46 this year, and we have 37 of them.
Can we account for those 30, well, the gap anywhere? Like, you know, children-first?
Yep. But, I don't think all were at children-first. I think some homeschooling and one other.
Because not every student in the children-first kindergarten is a Granby resident.
Right. So, again, we gambled a little bit last year with kindergarten. I keep saying that, and it worked out. We're in right now that same ballpark as where we were a year ago to say we would need two versus the three. A lot can change, right? We talked about building our budget on projections. Like, this is a projection as well. There's also the chance here, this could be one. That would be two years away. But then...
No.
That's not going to be one.
No, that still has to be two. You can't, no.
What's that?
Said that still has to be two.
Yeah, but if we see this, if our numbers are a reduction of what we currently, like...
Where I lost 10.
I know.
So, it could only be 16. That would be one, which would be one, 16 is one.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be, that would be a one year, again, that's two years out. We could have moved in, we could have moved out, since...
But the thing with the census, too, is that it follows all the way through. Like, you know, just because they're, you know, when they're starting, like, we're seeing fluctuations in all of the grades. And in some instances, we're bringing a lot more in, you know, because people are moving into town. But, that's not reflected, like, that, we don't know what that looks like either. I mean, it's all, it's all a guessing game, you know?
Projections.
So...
And these are, right, these, I think, the capacity committee last year identified these two years as like, whoa, what hap, right? This is COVID, and that could be, we could be closer to three than we are one with just residents. It looks like right now, that might be a two-year thing, but again, I'm not going to try and predict.
Well, and you wonder, too, when they did that, like, how far through the year, you know what I mean? If they had babies that were just born versus the, you know, the true.
Yeah, so we waited until late September to ask for the numbers, so we have the August.
Okay.
But then, like, so, next year's, the current sixth grade going to seventh, next year is two.
Yep.
But then, currently, K is two. So, also, like, are we keeping, I mean, that's just something that would be on the forefront, are we keeping that two?
Well, it depends on what happens.
Right. There's just so many different pieces.
That is the truth.
Because are we looking for one room right now or two?
You know, we talk, keep talking about whether, you know, and I'm just going to go out there on this, too, of vote, not a vote, like, or is it that we're trusting the schools by a certain deadline to make the decision of what's best, just like they do every day for what the dynamic would be? Because even once we make whatever we're making, we're not, we're not doing the decisions all on, you know, the page of these things could happen. Like, that's on you guys, so... I don't like it.
I don't think anyone likes that. Honestly, I think that's why it's still going around and around, because...
If there was an ideal answer, I'm confident that you guys would have landed there a long time ago. I totally get it, and there's pros to moving the sixth grade next door, but there are, yes, there are cons to moving the sixth grade next door. And there are pros to keeping the sixth grade here, and there are cons to keeping the sixth grade here.
Depending on which side of the bed I wake up on depends a lot, is where I land on the issue. Seriously, I can waffle back and forth 180 degrees very strongly in either direction. And that either makes me a lunatic or, like, you know, there's so many different things that play a part in it. And it, it feels like this huge weight to have to be making a decision, because I know, regardless of what we do, even if I'm 100% confident in the decision, we're going to have people extremely ticked off at us. And, you know, we're never going to make everybody, no matter which way we go, people are going to be happy or unhappy about it. And I think, I don't know, I can pontificate.
Can we do like, this is totally like, off the, like, parent opt-in? You want to send your child to first sixth grade over there, and we create a class over there? You want your child to stay here for sixth grade? That, that's what you opt-in to for the year, once you make your choice, that's it.
I think that's creating like a whole new set of issues, though. Like, you really are, because you're like, literally, you're literally not only looking at trying to staff two different programs, you're literally setting things, you're setting different differences apart. You're literally potentially asking parents to identify what students are more mature in their eyes or more whatever in their eyes based on whatever factors they value, and like, making that line and that division, which is, in my mind, kind of the exact opposite of what we're trying to do, which is kind of take all this information. Some of them are, I think, are very like hard and true facts, and other them, other, other of them are really the projections, right? Because it's not, the numbers can shift and the information can change. But then, do what's best. But then do what's best kind of overall for all students, like, as a whole. So, you know, it's, it's the current students, it's the students coming up, it's like, what is this gonna look like for the district? So, you know, I think you could pull one year, you could pull parents, and they might all shift in one direction, the next year could all shift in a totally different way. And I don't think that that's necessarily super helpful-
Either.
For, for anybody. And I think that's why it's kind of left here for kind of the unpopular decision. And that, for me, like, if there needs to be like a finger-pointing thing, then, and that's when people feel like that's what they need to do to be okay with whatever decision is made, then whatever. Like, and again, like, there are elections, it is an elected position, so if people at some point in time feel like they can do a better job, then let them decide they wanna run or volunteer, like, whatever it is. Um, because I think we're trying to do the best we can. I'm done.
I wanna take like a-
I agree, and I think, like, one thing that I and Jill touched on it a little bit, one thing that I would prefer to avoid is they're going and then they're coming back in a year, and they're go- like, I would prefer to avoid that, and I also think there's other things that play into this conversation. The MSBA statement of interest, the conversation with the town about the kitchen, right? There's all of this that we don't have answers to as well, that I think, having been part of it for the past few years, right? We'd be naive to say like, those things wouldn't play a role or have an impact in the decision people might make, or how they might react to a decision. So, those are just things that we're not gonna have a firm grasp on today, or I don't think even two weeks from now we're gonna have that, but my goal is that that picture clears up over the course of the next six months to a year, if not sooner, I would hope, but I, I can't sit here and promise that to people either.
I just have almost like a silly question, but, um, considering this is all about space, or started out as a space issue, for the immediate next school year, are we actually only short one classroom or two? Because that also, for me, is a very, like, that plays a very big-
So do we not know because of the K to one and that shift that could potentially exist with the numbers?
But if K currently is two, like, we know, we have those numbers as a fact, and we actually have a smidgen of room if someone didn't move in or what have you. Sixth is going next year regardless of the two, are we really only, if we kept kindergarten at two, are we really only looking for one additional fifth grade room?
For next year?
For next school year?
Maybe so, yes.
But then it becomes that question too of, are we tasked to this because we're trying to decide ultimately what is the best decision for our students, also based on all these other things that are pros and cons?
Which I totally get that, but-
Other than just the space discussion.
Given like the MSBA, there's questions that we just don't have the answers to for, at all right now, that are just unknown, that we might not have next year, I'm just-
What, you mean like the-
Like, one of the repercussions, the different, like, kitchen-
I think we fell back on the fact that the document says if we run out of space here, we can, we have a whole building next door. It is in the document. Right?
I'm more concerned, my MSBA hang-up is on the, what we submitted. That's my hang-up.
Right. But I feel like once we get accepted, we would be able to have that conversation.
It's not gonna be a full reimbursement if the sixth grade is over there, they've already told us that.
Right, that's, that's what I'm referring to.
We had that conversation walking around in the parking lot on the visit last time, when they were here. When was that, last, the spring?
November.
God, was it a year ago already?
Time flies.
I mean, cause the caveat with that is, whatever we decide, we don't have five years that it takes to get through an MSBA project necessarily either.
We're now even further behind, like, if we, if, or, I guess that's one of my biggest concerns, is what the impact is for us, for the MSBA, for the high school.
Right, but so what you're saying is, is if sixth grade is included, the reimbursement's less, correct? So what I'm saying is, okay, based on that, we're gonna decide, we're keeping hypothetically, we don't have the five years of space potentially here anyway, so then what? Do you know what I mean? Like, it becomes, then you go to that slide.
It becomes all of those options where-
Right.
There's no specialist potentially in classrooms, there's all those spaces being utilized, there's one class of sixteen and a group of whatever, and then, or there's the flexible-
Again, all playing with hypothetical.
I know.
It's that whole slide of hypothetical options, I don't, like, know that you-
Jen's right, that, um, one of the women on that walk did mention the potential having a conversation for recouping, but I think, and I understand why you're caught up on it, but I think even that's a hypothetical, because we don't, not like, they haven't officially told us-
Oh, that wasn't like a black and white.
Nobody that's put in writing that says, because this was done, you went, but they did say that on that walk. They said, we would potentially enter into a conversation about recouping funds.
But then also too, I feel like it, we are putting, so I'm looking at this in a, in a bigger picture way, like, the whole MSBA thing, I'll just lay it out there. My, my hang-up is a hundred percent on the MSBA part for the school, for the, for the high school, because I think we're gonna have a harder time getting it passed the town people for a vote if we're asking for, because we can't, we can't lie and say that it's a seven-through-twelve building when it's going to be a six-through-twelve building, when we built the school for pre-K to six. Like, you know, so I think we're putting ourselves at a disadvantage. I can come up with a number of questions and I can keep going, but if we're, I mean-
I mean, we're also at a disadvantage, but the town voted down a seven-through-twelve two times, three times, like-
I get, I get it, Abby, but I mean, like, right now, we can't-
The town's also very vocal about sixth grade too, so are we gonna lose people that were?
We can't, we can't get it passed.
Where have we heard from the town about this? Not from the town, the town's people.
But I, I think that-
We're naive to say that we don't know that the majority, what the feel was.
I just think we're gonna, we're at a much difficult, more difficult position if we're, we have to pull what we have and start over again, and then try to get it through six-through-twelve. I mean, it was miraculous that we, that we have what we have, like, that we got this building.
Right, but it was also at the cost of two classrooms that-
Which was nev- which never came-
hindsight twenty-twenty, probably should've included and not eliminated, yeah.
And the gym should've been bigger too, I mean, we can play, we can play that game forever.
Yeah, and I think the hypotheticals work every way too, right? We've talked about universal pre-K, if universal pre-K becomes a mandate, does MSBA then make pre-K reimbursable? We don't know, right? Like, so then is it pre-K, seven-through-twelve, which is an option, isn't it, right? We, there's a million what-if set we could play that we're just not gonna have those answers.
So, you know, I'm sort of honestly sick to death of looking at it, so, I mean-
I'm right there with you.
What, what do you all wanna do? Because, I mean, we can, we can-
Are we gonna put this document out online for people to view, or is it already there? Where can it be found?
So here's the thing about that-
So if you go to the school committee, so, there's new folders on the school committee website, it will have a folder that has the agenda, all the documents from the meeting, and the video. So once the video gets shared, the video will go in that folder, this presentation will go in the folder, everything will be there.
Great.
We're a couple meetings behind on that, but we're getting close to cut out.
But the, so, I understand transparency and I get it, but honestly, I mean, we've put it out there for input. We've had the questions, we've done the fi- the focus groups, we've done the questions and answers, we've surveyed the depth out of this for people. Uh, we, we need to share it a hundred percent, and of course, I'm open to feedback, but at the same time, I'm not, I'm not willing to open myself up to be berated again.
I don't disagree with you, but at the same time, we're saying majority is against, but I, has anybody started to, I mean, we, like, I, I know that there's been chatterings online, but like, people directly coming and sharing, like, not that I feel like that that's necessary, cause I feel like there's two sides on everything, but like, to vocally say majority, but I, I don't like-
I haven't really talked to anyone outside of you all, nobody's contacted me for, for-
And not that I don't think that they exist, I absolutely do, because, but there's probably people also are-
Different than yours too, I'm sure, so.
I just got stopped by someone that doesn't, doesn't have a kid in the game at all and at a, at a soccer game last week. So I know that it's out there.
Yeah, for sure, and I have people that I work with that their district did it, and they're like, ugh, like, sorry, you know? But they're like, actually, and there's another one that's like, it's going better than we thought it would. Like, you know, you feel like, I feel like you do here, but I haven't-
I know that whatever we do, the, the staff and the administration we have in place is going to make the best of a bad, of a not ideal situation. I don't wanna say bad situation, because the not ideal of it is that we've even having to have this conversation at all, what's going on for three years, right?
Five years after we built the school, and whatever.
Not even, so, I mean, I, I just don't know how much more time I want to, to, and, it's horrible to say, but I don't know how much, like, fight I have left in me, and it's not even a fight necessarily, but like, I don't know.
So I'll just throw it out there, there was never a plan that there was action taken on this tonight, so I don't think you, any of you have to be held to, like, we need to take an action tonight. That was never part of the plan. Plan was you had some questions, to try to answer those questions, and I think you have some time to like, like, let that marinate and sit, and we'll be back in two weeks and we can put it back on if there's any questions, or I'm happy to talk to people in the meantime, but I agree with everything that you're saying, that, I mean, we're-
I don't love it.
In some ways it feels like we're beating a dead horse, but I just wanna make sure that, like, we're communicating this well to say like, these are some of the options that we have to consider and that we have to wrestle with, and there's not an ideal answer, because people have worked really, really hard on this. I think of Audrey and Megan and Todd and that committee last year and the time that they spent. I think about Jen and Emery and Jim Petrus and all, like, a lot of time and effort has been spent on this, and I think if there was a solution that was gonna make everyone happy, which I know that may not exist, we would've landed there. There's a lot of really smart, capable people who have been working on this, um, and it's challenging, and I think it's, you know, it's shameful that people wanna take it out and you all, because you're faced with this decision, you didn't create this. I get people get emotional about this, but, um, like, I think that's too bad that people take to social media or meet you at a game or a practice and, like, target you because of something that is your experience.
I haven't had that happen, just to clarify, that's not what I'm saying, and actually, I'm open to people reaching out. Again, not to beat that dead horse either.
But productive conversation is different than fear.
Correct, absolutely.
At appropriate times. Well, sometimes, I'm just saying, sometimes that is like overwhelming, you know? Like, I'm here as a parent right now, like, I wanna watch like, the last thirty minutes of something, sometimes there's an appropriate piece for that.
Yeah, but also for me personally, I wouldn't want to vote on this tonight. I, I think that would be kind of going against the transparency we're trying to have, you know? This isn't live on YouTube anymore, I want people to have the chance to access it here. Know that we're taking this, um, not lightly, you know, that we're really looking at a lot of things, we're taking our time, um, to make sure we're, you know, thinking of any subsequent questions. I feel like we've also stated too, Stephen, that if other people had questions outside of this committee, that they're welcome to reach out to you.
Yeah.
To reiterate that again, um, if there's something specific. I absorbed a lot of my last year extra, you know, doing it too, and it's, it's a lot.
Yep. So, all right, I don't have anything else to share, so, we will post this though with the-
I appreciate that.
Few minutes of the video.
Superintendent's report.
So, I know, uh, Ms. Jordan sent something out today to families at the junior, senior high school regarding Alice training. Um, it's part of our emergency operation procedures. We're, um, doing building level, level training for grades seven through twelve, working with Officer Gilly. Um, and those presentations will be next week. They are, Officer Gilly and Ms. Dejarle are in conversation about it. Uh, Ms. Dejarle is establishing an emergency response team at, here at East Meadow as a first step, so she's getting her team organized, and there will be information about, um, Alice shared with parents, families, and students in the near future. Um, I am still waiting to hear back from Deputy Chief Seer on our emergency operation plan. Once, uh, we have feedback on that, like I've been saying, we'll make sure we get, get that on a school committee agenda. Um, the two thousand twenty-two MCAS and accountability data was made public by DESI last week. Um, our results are mixed, similar to results across the state. We are still analyzing them, we've taken a pretty surface-level look at this point. Um, but if nothing else, the results show that the academic recovery from the pandemic is going to take more than a year. I don't think that's news to anybody, um, but we're starting to see that in our data. Our data's matching up with, um, the eye test certainly. Um, there's certainly areas that we should and will celebrate, but there's, um, certainly, there's also a need for continued improvement, and I do feel like our focus areas, which are designing powerful learning experiences, meeting the needs of all students, and using data to inform our decision-making, are supported, um, by the data that we're seeing, both in statewide assessments and our district-based benchmark assessments. Um, so I shared with the committee last week some links, and I'm working on a letter to the community that should be up by the end of this week too. Um, we're continuing, we talked about it a little bit before, continuing to hire a few positions, substitutes, paraprofessionals. If you know of anybody who's interested, please have them reach out to my office or either school, and they can direct people who are interested on how to apply. Um, tomorrow is Picture Day at East Meadow, all went out before our meeting, so just a reminder to folks that make sure that they have their form and they're scheduling a makeup day for anybody who can't be there. Um, reminder to anyone watching that we are, have a joint meeting with the Select Board and Finance Committee on October seventeenth at five-thirty to discuss our capital improvement projects, and, um, we'll present our facilities assessment there. And last thing that came to my attention today was, um, May seventeenth is a scheduled half-day on our district calendar, and it is a math high school MCAS day. So, I will put that, I'll work with the GEA and put it on an upcoming agenda, um, because unlike grades three through eight, high school days are specific, and I don't know how we miss that unless the testing schedule came out after, cause it's typically something that we check. So I apologize to people by that, for that, but I do anticipate requesting changing that half-day to another day that is not scheduled for testing. That's all that I have.
Is there any other updated calendar changes to come, to future?
Um, I, yes, potentially, I'm working, I think it would be for next year's calendar.
Okay.
So you said the joint meeting, it's over at the Senior Center, right?
Correct.
Not here?
Yes.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Any questions? Comments? You?
I'm good.
All right. Do you have anything for CES?
Well, I talked, I mean, I talked about the capital reserve plan, that was the big thing of our meeting when we met. Um, other than that, I think I'm good.
Um, do we need to go over anything for our next agenda?
I think if we're gonna meet this sub- I think if we're going to meet the subcommittees, if that's our plan, which subcommittees?
Who wants to be up?
Do we need to meet for, do we finalize, I'm like, I'm sorry, do we finalize school committee goals? So we need to do that.
So evaluation.
Mm-hmm. Right? Mm-hmm.
Evaluation of what?
Are we going to try to keep budget and finance separate or run on that schedule? I'm finding the way, I just, I think we did it tonight just because we wanted to get one on the agenda, but then I know when we run them, kind of concurrent with each other...
Do we need committee relations? I feel like right now is kind of actually quiet, right? Like, we just had, you know what I mean, we just had a lot of events, there's not much to make up.
Yeah, this...
I'm actually drawing a blank on...
You wanted a debrief, like, the Dino Fest stuff, but we've kind of...
I think it'd be very quick.
Yep.
What are the other committees I'm drawing a blank? There's calendar, there was the committee relations.
Policy.
Is there anything for policy? That's the same, that's the same, the same group? Well, maybe we...
Is the, the, no, I was thinking that school committee, mm-hmm, leave my mind, Jill.
The conference?
Yes, that's November, right? Okay, sorry, I'm good.
So, I mean...
Good job.
Do we want to have, we can use the time for budget then? Anything else for our next time?
What committee did you end up on?
Allocation.
Okay.
Which one?
Allocation.
Oh, yes.
I won't be able to be around the eighteenth.
Okay.
I'm just, like, we said, there's not much going on right now, I'd be like the Dino Fest debrief.
All right. Anything else you can email for the next agenda? With that, we'll vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part A 3, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bartosz?
Aye.
Ms. Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Wompe?
Aye.
Ms. Shurrock?
Yes.
Ms. Talbot?
Aye.